June 23, 2022, meeting of the Parker Planning Commission to order at 7:00 PM. Please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Eric. Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, are there any additions to or deletions from the agenda?
No, sir, there are not.
Okay. Roll call, absent is Rich, seated for Rich is Roxy, and also Nick is absent tonight. Approval of minutes, are there any changes to or additions to the Planning Commission meeting minutes from June 9, 2022?
No.
None from me.
Okay, do we have a motion?
I move to approve, oops, I move to approve the minutes from the June 9 meeting.
I second.
It's been moved by Ruth Ann, seconded by Eliana, that we approve the Planning Commission meeting minutes from June 9, 2022, and I'll call the question. Kim?
Aye.
Eliana?
Aye.
Eric?
Aye.
Ruth Ann?
Aye.
Roxy?
Aye.
Chair's aye, passes unanimously. Okay, item number six on our agenda tonight, 6A, is a 2022 update for the Open Space Trails and Greenways Master Plan as part of the Town of Parker 2035 Master Plan, and we will open the public hearing at 7:02, and Jeremiah, we're all yours.
All right, thank you Chairman. Jeremiah Fettig, I'll be giving staff's presentation on this item, so staff has undertaken an update to the Open Space Trails Greenways Master Plan. Next slide, please. So just a little bit background, this was first adopted back in 2004. In 2010, it went through a major overhaul, and that's the current document that we've been using for the past 12 years. And how is this plan used? So this plan guides and provides criteria for open space preservation acquisition, you know, during development review, so we get, you know, plats and those types of things coming through. We want to make sure that we're preserving those spaces, those trails, those corridors, the greenways, open spaces, all of that at that time. It also provides criteria for important trail connections. It lists missing links, so that's the key thing tonight that we're looking at. We've identified some missing links and added those to Map 3, which we'll get to in a bit. It's also used for the capital improvement program, so budgeting, allocating those resources to implement these missing connections and fill those gaps during the budgeting, and then once again during the development review process. So the plan's vision is to provide an integrated and cohesive open space and trail system that fulfills the recreational, non-motorized movement ecological and aesthetic needs of the town, so it could set that active lifestyle that we all enjoy down here in Parker. So as I mentioned, basically, this plan is 12 years old, so it's a bit outdated. So staff is surgically very limited in nature, making some amendments to this plan. We want to reflect the new trails that have been constructed since 2010 to now, and the addition of those new missing links as well. Staff also intends for a major update to occur in 2025, so a few years out, so this really is just here to tide us over until we get to that point where we can do a full rewrite of this plan. There are revisions to three of the eight maps within the document, and there's also minor text revisions, spelling errors that we caught, updating some of the statistics of acreages and miles of trails, and there was also some updates to trail maintenance based on some discussions from our legal department. So the map revisions were to Maps 1, 2, and 3, relate to approved open space, approved trails, and then the missing trails connections, which is the real crux of tonight's meeting. So we've identified five new missing trail connections on Map 3. We removed nine completed connections, so since 2010, completed 10 of the, or nine of those, removed those so that, you know, it's shown as done on the maps, and then within the town's boundary, I should add to that. And then we removed three completed connections outside of the town's planning area. So that's just a nod to our neighbors, right? They've done improvements, gotten some connections done, so we're just documenting those on that map. So this is very hard to see, but these are the missing trails connections. We'll go through all five of them, much zoomed in picture, so we can go to those one by one. All right, so the first one that was identified was a connection at West Creek, so connects, it would be an acreade crossing at Parker Road near the Chick-fil-A, south of E-470. So the multifamily is just off to the west, in West Creek there, so this would, you know, provide an opportunity, a link to get to Cherry Creek Trail instead of having to go south about half a mile or so. The second link that we identified as missing was an extension of the East-West Trail at Cherry Creek Trail to Canterbury, the Piesco, the Public Service Company Trail that runs south of Rowley Downs there. So this would tie into trail that's occurring in the Piesco Trail, and then tie into the Cherry Creek Trail, so just to get that east-west connection to fill that void between the Third one we identified was, again, on the Canterbury-Piesco Trail. This would cross Selfridge Gulch to the north and Main Street, and then it would connect to a future trail that Douglas County has proposed to the north there. Then the other one was Oak Gulch, so this would just be a linkage between, you know, a future trail to the west, and then once again getting back to Cherry Creek Trail. That's our main trail, you know, our arterial trail, north-south, so any linkages that we can get to that is a great opportunity. And the final one that's identified is a spur off the High Plains Trail or the E-470 Trail, so this would go, connect to Cottonwood Drive to the south there, but it would provide an opportunity to go north, get on the High Plains Trail, just to the west on Parker Road. There's currently all the work going on for the grade separated crossing, so once again, just looking at those linkages. So in conclusion, this is a very minor update. We just wanted to utilize some information that we gained from back in March. We had the Bike and Pet Open Houses, Bike and Pet Plan Open Houses, and we also utilized Let's Talk Parker. We had an interactive mapping tool, so we heard public feedback for these missing trails connections, and we also had internal discussions with other departments, parks and engineering, and that was the list that we came up with. Let's see, again, we want to bring this forward in 2025 for a major update, so that's why we kept this very minimal surgical focus on those trails. But with that, the recommendation, staff recommends, the Planning Commission recommend Town Council adopt the 2022 update of the Open Space Trails and Greenways Master Plan. And with that, I'll stand for questions.
Questions for Jeremiah?
I have one question. To implement in 2025, when do you commence the actual change?
Oh, so we would do it in 2025, right? So anticipate a year or something, I would imagine, to write that, draft that plan, so 2026. Okay, thank you.
I have a question, so basically, this is map revisions, we're cleaning up some errors and whatnot, but my interest is, is there any, do we have a forecast for trail development for actually completing these missing links?
Not specifically that I think I could answer, but our, you know, parks, Brett Collins and our Parks and Rec Open Space, he's working on our partners' municipalities around us, and he's working internally to budget and fill in those missing links. We leverage, you know, this plan and the criteria within it to identify and allocate those resources. If you have more?
I understand this is the, like, first step, so.
Yeah, in addition, we have a 10-year capital improvement program, and so that includes trail, I don't know the list off the top of my head, but that includes a number of trail projects.
Okay, thank you.
No further questions?
No more questions? Okay, then, as this is a public hearing, we invite the public to participate by making a public comment. If you wish to comment on this item before the commission tonight, please step to the podium and state your name and address for the record. Seeing no one, are there any of the hands raised, Bryce?
No, sir, there are not.
Okay, then we will close the public comment portion of the meeting. Any further questions for Jeremiah?
No. None for me.
All right, then we will close the public hearing at 7:11. Commissioner, discussion.
I see this as a simple cleanup until 2026 when it's completed, so I'm in favor of it. Certainly, being proactive is better than reactive.
I appreciated some of the stuff, Commissioner. Ruth Ann pulled out, you had some questions, making proposed to existing. It seems pretty administrative to me.
Yeah, I have nothing to add. I agree, this is very good, good that we're ahead of this. Thank you.
I'm in support of this, and I want to just, you know, thank you Jeremiah and everyone that put hours into it, so I want to recognize you for that hard work.
I'm glad that we were able to get the public feedback in order to figure out where we need to continue to expand our trail system. I am in support of this.
And appreciate staff's work on this and Parks and Rec as well, and I'll be in support of it. Do we have a motion?
I move the Planning Commission recommend Town Council adopt the Town of Parker's 2022 update of the Open Space Trails and Greenways Master Plan.
I will second.
It's been moved by Eric, seconded by Roxy. The Planning Commission recommend Town Council adopt the Town of Parker's 2022 update of the Open Space Trails and Greenways Master Plan, and I'll call the question. Kim?
Aye.
Eliana?
Aye.
Eric?
Aye.
Ruth Ann?
Aye.
And Roxy?
Aye.
Chair's aye, passes unanimously. Next, item 6B is a public hearing on the Parker Main Street Studio subdivision filing one minor development plat, and we will open this public hearing at 7:13. And Jeremiah, you're doing this one? All right.
Correct. Yes, filling in for Mary on this, this was her project.
Okay.
One second, so yeah.
We're all yours.
Good evening, this is the Parker Main Street Studio filing number one minor development So the subject property is located in the downtown area, just east of Parker Road, on the southeast corner of Main Street and Pike's Peak Drive. The property is bounded on the north by Main Street, to the east by town-owned Schoolhouse Cultural Event Venue, to the west by Pike's Peak Drive, and to the south by another commercial parcel. The property is currently zoned Greater Downtown Historic Center Zone District, and is located within the Main Street Master Plan character area of the Parker 2035 Master Plan. So some images here, both looking, or from the north looking south, so you can see it's already a developed property. This property was originally annexed into the town in 1981, so during the initial incorporation of the town, it was part of the original square, but it was never platted, right? Because it was already developed out in the county. The site includes an existing brick building developed in 1965, which again was prior to the incorporation of the town. Today, the building houses commercial uses, event space, and a personal service music So the minor development plat application, known as the Parker Main Street Studio subdivision, proposes to plat this unplatted parcel of land. The site is approximately .52 acres, so just over half an acre, and it's proposed to be platted into one legal lot of record. Staff has reviewed the proposal and has determined that, one, the project is consistent with the master plan, two, all platting requirements for the Parker Main Street Studio subdivision filing number one and land development ordinance have been satisfied, and three, public notice requirements have also all been satisfied. So with that, staff recommends, Planning Commission recommend Town Council approve the Parker Main Street Studio subdivision filing number one minor development plat. This concludes staff's presentation. Again, happy to answer any questions.
Questions for Jeremiah on this?
Is this being platted in anticipation of redevelopment?
No, it was part of, there was initiative, right, with P3 for funding to bring in those unplatted properties. We paid for some of the costs that are incurred during that process, surveying and whatnot. So it's just to clean it up. If they ever choose to do anything, it is easier, it's platted within the town, but there's no anticipated redevelopment at this time.
Thank you.
Other question?
None for me.
Not related to this project, but projects near there, are there other large unplatted parcels in and around that district?
That's a good question.
Yes, sir, there are actually a number of them down along Pike's Peak Drive and a couple along Main Street. Many of the properties that were developed in the county prior to annexing are part of the original creation of the town are unplatted, so you will be seeing more of these.
That was my follow-up question, maybe more. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions?
No.
All right, as again, this is a public hearing, and we invite the public to comment on the item before us now, and if you have a comment on this item, please step to the podium and state your name and address for the record. Bryce, do we have any hands raised?
No, sir, we do not.
All right, and we will close the public comment portion. Any other questions for Jeremiah?
No.
All right, then we will close the public hearing at 7:17, and we will, Commissioner, discussion.
This is the real estate equivalent of dotting your i's and crossing your t's, so I am in support.
I agree with Ruth Ann.
I have nothing more to add, it's exactly that.
Yep, appreciate the cleanup and the effort here.
Yeah, I agree.
It's always fun to get rid of those meets and bounds property descriptions. Anyway, do we have a motion?
I move the Planning Commission recommend Town Council approve the Parker Main Street Studio subdivision filing number one minor development plat.
I'll second.
It's been moved by Eric, seconded by Eliana. The Planning Commission recommend Town Council approve the Parker Main Street Studio subdivision filing number one minor development plat, and I'll call the question. Kim?
Aye.
Eliana?
Aye.
Eric?
Aye.
Ruth Ann?
Aye.
Roxy?
Aye.
Chair's aye, passes unanimously. All right. Thank you Jeremiah. Next item would be 6C, and that is Auburn Hills Center Lot 4 Circle K Gas Used by Special Review, and we will open the public hearing at 7:19. Julia, we're all yours.
Good evening, Chairman, Commissioners Julia Duncan with the Planning Department. Thank you for having me this evening. Before you is a request for a use by special review for a convenience store and gas station. The applicant, Circle K, is proposing a use by special review for a 5,200 square foot convenience store and gas station. The site is located southwest of the intersection of Main Street and Jordan Road. The subject property was annexed into the town in June of 1987 and is currently undeveloped with a planned development zoning. The site area is approximately 1.597 acres. On May 16, 2022, Town Council approved Auburn Hills Center Minor Development Plat, creating five new buildable lots as well as access aisles, sidewalks, and tree lawns. The subject property is located within a neighborhood center area as designated by the Parker 2035 Master Plan. Neighborhood centers are generally, serve the basic needs of the surrounding residents. Typical uses within neighborhood centers include convenient retail and personal business services. The Bradbury Ranch PD Third Amendment designates the property as neighborhood commercial, which intends to provide a broad range of retail goods and services, business and professional services which support residential uses, and complementary public community services and facilities. The Bradbury Ranch PD Third Amendment allows gas stations as a use by special review, but requires an enhanced level of review evaluation under the nine special review criteria by the Town Council at a public hearing. The requested use by special review is consistent with the goals and strategies of the master plan by balancing Parker's business and retail community to include a variety and diversity of business types and scales. Circle K proposes a new 5,200 square foot convenience store with a single stack fuel canopy and seven fuel pumps. There are 22 standard parking stalls with one ADA parking stall. The proposed Circle K will operate 24 hours per day. The building will be required to meet the town development design standards and is proposed to have masonry, stone, and stucco features with varying roof lines and architectural pop-outs. Access will be on the west side of the property from the internal drive aisle, which takes access off of Cedar Gulch Parkway and East Auburn Hills Drive. Site plan approval is required for the application. Staff has reviewed the proposal and has determined that the project is consistent with the master plan, and the use will be consistent with the surrounding area, and will not result in an overuse of the land, create traffic congestion, or be detrimental to the town. Additional mitigating conditions are recommended for approval, and I can go into those in detail later if you'd like. Staff has reviewed the proposal and has determined that the project satisfies the nine criteria required in the land development ordinance for a use by special review, and referral agency comments have been addressed. Staff recommends, sorry, staff recommends that the Planning Commission recommend that the Town Council approve the Auburn Hills Center Lot 4 Circle K Gas Used by Special Review, subject to the conditions contained in staff's report. This concludes my report, and I'm available to answer any questions you may have. The applicant is also here for brief introduction and to answer any questions as well.
Okay, questions for Julia?
I'm a little confused, is this part, is this just going to use that southeast corner of the parcel?
Yeah, there is.
Where the star was on that first graphic, so there's going to be land around it that's not being used?
Correct, there's two additional lots to the north of the site along Main Street that were platted through that May 16 approval in the minor development plat. Those have not been scheduled for development yet, they're platted, but the lots on the hard corner of Jordan and Main Street are available for future development.
Okay, and where again are the ingress and egress for this going to be?
So there's an access aisle about midway in between East Auburn Hills Drive, so between Jordan Road and Cedar Gulch, and I think if we can make that bigger, you might be able to see it. So that, the drive that runs east-west on the south of the property is called East Auburn Hills Drive. About midway through, there's a drive aisle that enters into the site, and then on Cedar Gulch, which is the north-south drive, there's another access aisle that goes into the site.
So that's the, that's the street that has residence, residents on the other side, correct?
To the west of East Cedar Gulch, there are, there's a residential development that has a, there's a residential buffer there, and there's a fence, but there is residences to the west.
And will there be any ingress or egress from the other, well, you don't know, because you don't know what's going in north, but is there anything coming off of Jordan at all?
There's no, there was nothing approved from engineering for additional drive aisles off of Jordan or Main Street.
Okay, thank you. Oh, one other question, what is the lighting, the lighting, you know, with a 24-hour gas station, you're going to have it fairly well lit? What, what measures have been put into place in order to protect surrounding residences from overflow lighting and that sort of thing?
Sure, so our site plan approval process does require a photometric analysis to be submitted. Our photo, the photometric section of our code prohibits any foot candles in excess of one foot candle along property lines, and they have to show that they would not exceed that through that submittal. The code also prohibits neon lighting, that's something we could additionally condition through the site plan approval process.
I'm also concerned, like LED lights, sometimes if they're aimed the right way, they're not terribly bright, but if you're, if you're in the way of that LED, it can really blind you, so I'm concerned about that and into windows of nearby residences.
Absolutely, it's a valid concern, and our code does address that by requiring screening of all lighting to make sure that lighting is shielded in a downward direction. It depends on the type of light, we have different screening requirements depending on whether it's LED or incandescent or what have you. We look at what they're proposing in the photometric plan when they do that site plan submittal to make sure it's meeting all of those requirements, and we also have an average, an average to minimum and a maximum to minimum of our foot candles that are allowed on site.
Okay, one final question, I know that the venting for the various tanks have to go up through the canopy, what kind of venting is that? Is that a, to provide pressure for the, so the tanks will run? Can I get some more information on that?
Yeah, I may ask the applicant to go into further detail on the specifics of the vents, I know that they are standard on gas stations, and what we have found in previous approvals is that if it's not conditioned to be screened, they can pop up anywhere on site. So this wasn't a standard condition, this was a mitigating condition that staff decided to request, so it's built into the canopy and not a random pipe in the middle of a parking lot or on a corner or something that would be aesthetically unpleasing.
Okay, so it actually, the venting actually occurs like above the top of the canopy, is that correct?
Well, and it would run through the pillars of the canopy to be screened as opposed to in the, you know, side yard or along the sidewalk or something to that effect.
Okay, I'd be interested in hearing the applicant's additional information they have on that.
Yeah, I'm not quite sure how, what it's venting or how that works, but. Yeah, I'm not quite sure how, what it's venting or how that works, but maybe they can answer that.
Thank you. That's all I have.
I do have a couple of questions. So this property is zone commercial. I believe that this is a use by right, but it has to go through the use by special review process because of the gas station, correct? Or incorrect?
Correct. It is a use allowed through the use by special review process if it meets the nine criteria.
Can you go, excuse me, can you go to the slide where it shows the bare ground? It's basically the aerial that says project site. I'm still a little confused on the ingress egress, and can we just kind of have a little, maybe you could run your cursor. Not that one possibly.
One yellow circle.
That's it.
That's a, that's actually a good one, I could do that.
Do you want me to?
Can you just point to it? Can I use your, can I use your mouse real quick?
So there is a, there will be a dry, if you, can everyone see my mouse?
Yes.
Okay. So there is an ax, this was all a previously approved, these access aisles through the minor development plat, engineering evaluated through the traffic impacted analysis of what would be the best ingress and egress. We also have requirements for the distance. Access aisles are allowed to be from major intersections. The first access is a road that runs north about midway along Eastern Auburn Hills, up through the, here. And then you, there is another entry that's midway off of East Cedar Gulch. These two roads connect.
Now, if I can interrupt real quick. Our little yellow box here is, that is not to scale. Is the proper, is the development actually going to extend across the entire southern part of this parcel? Or is it only going to, only going to be in the southeast corner of this parcel?
This is the, this is the approximate location of the platted lot. Because that plat was just adopted, I don't think the lines have shown up in our GIS systems yet, but this is the approximate size of the platted lot. The convenience store would be about here where I'm outlining in a rectangular shape. And then the fuel canopy would be about here. And then there would be an entry onto this lot down here and up here that you, you take off of those, that internal connected drive that runs like this.
So, and there are not currently any plans for the southwestern portion of that property, is that correct?
No other applications have been submitted. They, all of these lots have been platted.
Thank you.
Is there any, are there any traffic numbers that actually would come in off of the, the East Auburn Hills Drive? Or is that, sorry. Which one is that?
This one?
No, to the, yeah, Cedar, Cedar Gulch.
I don't have the traffic impact analysis with me that was submitted through the minor development plat. Through the plating process, it was required that the applicant pay, I believe, approximately $86,000 to install a light at this intersection. So that was one of the mitigating factors that engineering required. So there's that fee that they've paid to install a light down here. I don't know what the exact counts are for the number of daily trips.
So there's a, obviously, there's another development just across the street. There's a medical building, there's blah, blah, blah.
And a 24-hour gas station.
And I do know that when you, when you go in there, I don't know if, I don't, I've never driven much past those, my dentist is in there. So I've never really driven past the dentist, but my concern is, you know, I know there's homes over there too, and I'm just kind of curious. Are these going to be the same impacts? Or are they going to be greater impacts to Cedar Gulch? Because I don't, there's not another main arterial, I shouldn't even say arterial. There's not another road on the other side of that that's really a main road, kind of like Cedar Gulch. What, what is the reasoning behind just having one entrance maybe at Jordan? Is it, is it just?
Do you mean one entrance off of Jordan?
Off of Jordan into that hole? And was that just, was that just the way it was, the initial development plat?
Well, there's no proposed new entrances off of Jordan.
Right.
And that is a determination that's made by engineering. There is the distance that's required from Main Street, and I don't know if Bryce has any additional information, but I think it's the distance from the intersection and then the proximity to East Auburn Hills. If you were to throw an, an access off of Jordan, you'd be too close to Main Street or too close for East Auburn Hills.
So it has to do with the, the distances between the accesses, between the two access points?
That's my understanding.
So these roads, when the, when the whole development was platted with the residential as well, were intended to provide access not only to the residential areas but to the commercial areas, and so they're spaced meeting our standards.
Okay.
And that's why you don't see houses fronting on these roads is because they're collector roads intended to provide access to commercial and other local roads.
I think that's all I have right now.
Other question?
Are there any, there's no homes that actually face this property in the development to the west, is there?
There are homes to the west of East Cedar Gulch. I think their rear yards are oriented toward that direction.
Rear and side, correct? There's no homes that face that, correct?
I would say that they don't face it. They have rear yards that are oriented towards that direction.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Sorry, I do have one, another. So on the west side, I understand that we're looking at the south, actually, the southeast corner. But when we get to the west side, are we going to, is there plans? Or is it in basic criteria that we do something like on the northwest corner of Hess, there's a commercial, there's a commercial property there that does back to some neighborhoods? And I think there's a pretty high wall to make sure that, and, and again, this is, Cedar Gulch is between these, the homes and everything. But I, I don't know if you've had, if there are criteria now for landscaping in this, in this area because of the proximity to the homes?
So there are a number, there are six requirements in our land development ordinance for landscaping. We have our site perimeter landscaping, our parking lot perimeter landscaping that requires a minimum 10-foot buffer to allow for that increased landscaping. We have parking lot interior landscaping requirements, and we have our overall site requirements, all of which are unto themselves. You have to meet all of those requirements. We did condition this project as part of the use by special review, if it's recommended for approval by you all tonight, that the applicant shall provide a decorative two-and-a-half to three-foot knee wall designed to match the architecture of the principal building along the west and south ends, specifically to buffer the residences. And that would be in addition to the required landscaping, that's already a part of the LDO. If there were any additional applications that came in, all of those landscaping requirements for, for the, from the LDO would be applicable to that lot to the west. And I, we would, as the planning department, be sensitive to those residential uses and require enhanced screening.
Anything else? All right, does the applicant want to step forward and state their name and address for the record, please? I think the mic's off.
Good evening, Chairman and members of the Commission. My name is Sophie Hernandez with Land Development Consultants. We are located at 950 South Cherry Street in Denver. I am here representing Circle K as our client for the use by special review for the gas station. In response to the question that we had regarding the fuel vents.
Yes, please.
As far as that, it's for maintenance and to make sure that any extra air bubbles and everything like that go up to the top.
So the, my, my concern was that the, the venting was not like a noxious fumes coming out on a regular basis. I think federal law requires that that all be contained.
Yes, ma'am, that is correct.
Right, okay. I mean, it even goes into like how you, like have your nozzle organized so that it creates a somewhat of a seal.
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, thank you.
And with that, oh, sorry.
Any other questions for the applicant?
None for me.
Is this a single-story convenience store?
Yes, yes, it is. Single-story, it's approximately 30 feet in height.
Okay, and it is just one convenience store? You're not going to have different vendors?
That is correct.
Okay.
And how many fuel tanks? How many, how many fuel pumps?
It will be seven fuel dispensers, which would wait to 14 fueling positions.
And will you have the opportunity or be considering installing in the future the ability to charge your car electrically?
Yes, actually, Circle K is in the process currently of establishing a partnership to install EV parking and charging stations for future use.
And would those, would this site also be getting those?
Yes, ma'am, it basically would be plumped for that future. Once that establish, once that relationship is established, they will move forward with that program.
So, okay, so it's going to be built with the capacity to do that as soon as you get the paperwork signed?
That is correct.
Awesome.
I have a question just to, just ask if you and your firm have done any outreach with the neighborhood? Because we've got some, I guess, some rejection letters and emails and whatnot, so I'd like to encourage that and wanted to make sure and see if you guys had spoken with the residents around the area.
Yes, sir, we actually scheduled a neighborhood meeting and sent out letters to residents within 1,000 feet of the property. We hosted the neighborhood meeting, and we did not have any attendance from the neighboring residents.
Okay.
All right, anything else? All right, thank you, ma'am.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Any further questions for Julia?
No.
All right, and as this is a public hearing, and whoa, 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 whoa. Just give me a minute to get to it. Wow. Since there is interest in this item before us, the process is that you state your name and address for the record. And that you, the time is three minutes, there's a clock that you can see. And we will answer questions after all of the public comment has been made. And that's.
Good evening.
How it works.
Doug Newton on 6623 East Auburn Hills Drive. After your May 16th meeting or during it, Ms. Duncan made mention of the gas station, and I immediately found her email and sent her an email. And her response, I hope, is your response. She said that, I gave her an idea, and she said, "I will take this and, we will take this into consideration through the site plan process." What I suggested is one simple thing, because I'm sure that, well, anyway. If we could take this whole gas station and turn it 180 degrees, I appreciate your concern about the lights, and that's my, excuse me, my concern. If we could turn the whole gas station 180 degrees, put the pumps on the Jordan roadside, put the back of the building on the west side where all of our house is backed up to. That would decrease the problem, I think, with the lighting and the traffic. Another thing, on, do you guys, I think you have this little drawing? Do you have, this is the site map? Okay. If you notice on the left-hand side, whoever drew this has a tanker truck coming out of the gas station. And that tanker truck has two ba, two paths. It can either take a right turn to right on Main Street, or it can take a left turn to go around the townhouses and through the patio homes on Blackberry Ranch Road, or Blackberry Ranch Parkway, to get to Main Street, to turn left to, head I-25. That's, and that's going to be the same thing with the vendors from, you know, food sources, Coca-Cola, Pepsi-Cola, Budweiser. All the trucks are going to have only two outlets to get out of the gas station unless they turn left out of the gas station and go to Jordan Road. The other thing, somebody asked about across the street, and the church, Family Church has purchased that property, and they're building a church directly across the street from the gas station.
30 seconds, sir.
Oh, okay. One last thing then. Prairie Hills Elementary School is right around the corner on Auburn Hills, and at 3 o'clock, the traffic is backed up to turn right onto Main Street, all the way back to my house and these people's house. And then you've got the added traffic from the gas station being service trucks or tanker trucks. I hope you say no, but that's all I can say. You guys don't live 50 yards from the gas station. Thank you for your time.
For the record, Ron Sterling, 16647 East Auburn Hills Drive in Parker. Community resident there for 20 years. This parcel of land, north and south, I mentioned already about the church being approved and being built, and then the project site for a gas station. I was kind of wondering, you know, this property sat vacant for 20 years. I was kind of wondering what the original zoning was for this land. Maybe that's something you could supply. And about the written, or the notifications to the homeowners, I don't recall getting anything. I don't know if anybody here has about an outreach to the people that live in the area. This site for the gas station convenience center is surrounded on four sides by residential property. The townhomes are right there where this project is being looked at, and it impacts them greatly, all of the people in that townhome region, which I'm one of them. But to me, this seems like this is being shoehorned into a piece of property that is ill-equipped to handle this type of situation. The other is, what, what becomes of the other pieces of property around this gas station? What kind of other types of business would ever want to come and sidle up to a gas station at this site? Is there going to be things that are more undesirable, like, I don't know, tattoo parlors or god knows what with these other sites here? Because it's a very small area to have all this in there. And the gentleman mentioning about tanker trucks and that, you'd have to see this area in person to understand how tight this is in here. Another thing is there is a brand-new, very large preschool being built across Jordan Road. It's not even a half a block from this proposed gas station. And not to mention, traffic overcrowding at this intersection. And the big thing is, we already have a gas station less than a block away to the east. It's another 24-hour-a-day gas station. So I, I kind of wonder about use, land use, and this is a special hearing to determine whether or not things can be changed to fit this project in. I, for one, are definitely against the project. I think there's better use for the land. So I'd like you to consider this and possibly take a look at this site to see exactly what we're talking about, because it's not in your backyard, it's in our backyard. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Chair and Commissioners, for listening to the neighbors. First of all, I just want to point out very quickly, the map that, I'm sorry, I don't remember your name.
Could we have your name and address, please, ma'am?
Catherine Bailey, 16639 East Auburn Hills Drive.
Thank you, ma'am.
Into the townhomes. The map that she just put up with Jordan and Main Street, that is incorrect. When you make a right-hand turn off Jordan Road, that is Cedar Gulch. It doesn't turn in to Auburn Hills Drive until you reach the entrance into Auburn Hills Drive. And then it is a big oval circle. Also, the, um, I hope you understand that, but the other entrance into Auburn Hills that comes off Main Street, that is a two-way entrance and exit there. And that's what they're proposing too, as for where, one of the places where people would come. Back when they had proposed for the low-income housing on the other side of the street, there were numerous people that stood up and complained because of the immense amount of traffic that we already have there from the one school that is already up and running, and now we're gonna have the second one. And the last thing that I just truly believe, that doesn't make any sense to me, why a stone's throw away you have another twenty-four-hour gas station. I think that's what the neighbors are upset about, and I know nobody ever says this, and I'm sorry, but most of the people, I think I'm the youngest one in Auburn Hills. Um, it is an elderly community and there is a fear of what a twenty-four-hour gas station, what kind of clientele that would be brought in from that. And that is a big concern for us. Thank you.
Thank you ma'am.
Good evening. I'm Bob Blackwood, I live in Auburn Hills at 16655 East Auburn Hills Drive. I think you've received, uh, some email from me in regard to this project. Two or three of the comments, uh, I think the map is incorrect also. It, the paperwork we had said that this was gonna be developed on the southwest corner of that property. The map shows it on the southeast corner, for whatever that's worth. We have trouble getting out, in and out of our community now, especially when the schools lets out. But onto Main Street, uh, there's no traffic light near my house, and we can't get out of there. We go over to Jordan and there's traffic and we have trouble making a left turn. Uh, it's hard to get in and out of our neighborhood now. With more traffic, it's gonna be more difficult, so. And I agree with Kathy, we're worried about crime, traffic, and whatever goes with it. I can't see for the life of me why Parker needs another twenty-four-hour gas station, right in the middle of my neighborhood. Uh, growth is taking place down at, at Hess and Jordan, put one down there. That's my thought. Uh, I suggested to the commission that they do us a favor and try to find a barber shop, beauty shop, bank, insurance sales office, veterinary clinic, doctor's office, dry cleaners, or coffee shop. Any one of them would be much better than another twenty-four-hour gas station. We don't, we don't need it, and we don't want it. Any, was anyone have a question about anything that I suggested in my emails to you, I would welcome it.
Well, we'll address those when the public comment's over.
I'm sorry.
We'll address that when all of the public comment is over.
Okay. Thank you for allowing us to speak.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Pam Sterling, I'm a resident of Auburn Hills, 16647. I too am very concerned about this, uh, proposed gas station. Something that seems to be kinda overlooked here is the health impact. We got this nursery school that they've just built right across the street, it's not even a block away, it's literally across the median in the street. If anybody ever wants to go on the computer and look up the studies that have been done across the nation and in, um, numerous states like California and wherever, probably more progressive states that are into this. But anyway, you can find tons of information on respiratory problems and the exposure to benzene and diesel fuel. And when the stuff's being transferred by the fuel tanks, I mean, none of this is fail-safe, you know, it's not some, you know, perfect situation where you're not exposed. And all those tanks, when you go to, uh, put gas in your car, you see what it says, they have warning signs on it. But the point is, you're, you're raising your kids and you've got residents and stuff, people around that, they're vulnerable. Human beings are vulnerable to these types of chemicals, and no one seems to be looking at this at all. So that's one thing that I have a problem with. The other thing is, um, obviously the home values would be impacted. Uh, there's numerous studies on, you know, how the home values are impacted because nobody ever embraces a gas station, especially as they get older. As they get older, you have more problems with groundwater contamination and numerous things that can be a problem. So, anyway, um, these are all things that, to me, you have to look further than just putting it in initially and what it can do because it's convenient, cause you can get gas or buy something cheap at the convenience store. You have to look further down the line. Take a look at Parker and Parker Road and Main Street, where that station on the corner there, it was down and nobody would buy it. It's very hard to redevelop because the cost of going in and pulling those tanks out, nobody wants to do it unless you've got darn deep pockets for it. And luckily a bank came ahead and did it. But with the way we're transitioning into electric cars and away from fossil fuels and the combustible engine, I think that we need to look further down the line into the future and see that we have to at least pause on gas stations. We have to hold back. In California right now, they're planning on passing a law to prevent any more construction. That could happen here, and if it does-
Thirty seconds, ma'am.
We could, we could have gas stations all over the place in ten years that are gonna have to be pulled apart and redeveloped. There won't be money for it, there won't be enough money in the world for it. So anyway, but I would love to give this to one of you tonight, so you can gaze through it and see what you think, because this is the tip of the iceberg on what these gas stations and this type of business can do to a residential area. And we're surrounded by three of them, plus the nursery school right across the street. I'm very passionate about this, I've been here for thirty-three years, twenty years in that residential area, and I have standards that I think should be met in this area because people here have worked hard, put all their money, their effort, and everything into their homes, and it's important that we keep that standard up, we can't let it down.
Time's up ma'am, thank you.
Evening. Uh, my name is Ryan Coburn, I live at 16531 East Auburn Hills Drive, and for the record, I might actually be one of the younger people in Auburn Hills. So I moved in about three years ago, and I appreciated the area, the beauty of it, it is a nice area, it is surrounded by homes, single-family homes to the south. It is surrounded by single-family homes to the north across Main Street. It is also, um, uh, and then it has the single-family homes, um, to the east of it as well. So we have single-family homes all around, we have another gas station that is really just two minutes away. I have a couple of, you know, beyond the concerns that we've had for traffic congestion, cause the traffic from the schools go right by my house, and it is true. It backs up completely during the days. There is no room, I would imagine, for a semi or for a tanker truck to actually maneuver through that area. It, it just doesn't seem like it would fit, and it would also create additional, you know, additional issues. I've got some, uh, beyond that, the crime is something that I have a concern with. Our community is full of people who, one, are on the elderly side, and there are a number of them who leave for half of the year. My neighbors are gone six months out of the year. I personally travel and spend probably fifty percent of my time outside of the area. I don't wanna have that type of element in my area or my community when I am not at home to protect my property and, um, you know, and, and the things that I value. Um, I have a couple of other issues with the way that it is being designed. So what we're looking at when we see the, when we're standing in the parking lot, we're actually standing about ten to fifteen feet potentially above Main Street. And then we have a decline even further homes to the north. So when, if we are sta, if we're standing up here, the homes to the north across Main Street are actually looking directly into the lighting here. Um, and if we were to turn it the other way, then you would have a decline across Jordan as well, all of those homes. And those properties are also then looking straight up into the lighting. So however you're getting, you're, however you're looking at this, you are seeing additional light pollution. Um, and that effectively makes it a, instead of a thirty-foot building, from some vantage points, you're looking at it plus thirty to four, you're looking at roughly forty-plus feet, depending on where you are situated and looking at the actual property. I have a concern then with, you know, just the, you know, the, the, you know, from that point of view. Um, and I also wanna talk about, one, the diversity, we have additional twenty-plus, uh, gas stations in the area. I would say, I would argue that does not create any value for this community, for our-
Thirty seconds, sir.
Thank you. Uh, does not create any value, and it does not bring diversity to this location or to the community. It is not in harmony with the designs, it is not in harmony with the individuals that are living in this area. You know, and it just, we're a community of relatively high income, Costco members. We go to Costco to get gas, this is actually not providing any value to me, to my family, to the individuals that are sitting here, to the individuals across the street on any side of, of Parker or of this, of this development. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir. And we will close the public comment? But, oh, is there any Zoom?
Uh, there are no hands raised on Zoom.
Okay, all right, then we will close the public comment portion, thank you. Julie? Uh, no. Uh, Julia?
I took, uh, quite a substantive list of, um, the questions, so I think I'll just run through them, and if there's any additional, um, questions you have, I'm happy to answer those. There was some concerns raised about the traffic impacts from the Prairie Hills Elementary School. That concern was also brought up during the minor development plat, public hearing. After that hearing, we proactively reached out to our engineering department to ask them to make contact with the Douglas County School District. Traffic impacts from the school would and should be addressed by the school district, they're a separate entity from the town of Parker, but to be proactive and in response to, um, Commissioner Nelson's request, we did ask engineering to work with the school district to see if there can be any, um, mitigating, uh, mitigating factors that can be implemented. And we can get an update on that, I don't know what the result of that has been yet. Um, there was a question about, um, the zoning for the property. To be clear, there are no changes to the zoning. The zoning for the property is the Bradbury Ranch Plan Development. That was adopted at the same time as the annexation of the property in nineteen eighty-seven. So the zoning for the property has been the Bradbury Ranch PD since nineteen eighty-seven. There have been three amendments to that, but none in any recent time or in, um, association with this application. So there's no changes to the zoning, the zoning just says that if you do a gas station, you have to go through this process for a use by special review. So, Planning Commission, Town Council, and staff can recommend additional conditions to mitigate impacts and to make sure that it meets those nine criteria. Let's see. Um, there was a question about inaccuracies on the map. Um, the description, just to be clear, states that the location is to the southwest of the intersection of Main Street and Jordan, not where the particular parcel is located within the minor development plat. This is located southwest of the intersection of Jordan and Main Street. It is on the southeast side of the minor development plat. So, um, we could've had more clarity there, and I apologize for that confusion. If a use, some of, of the comments were concerning the particular kind of use and that, um, the department should require different kinds or varieties of businesses. If a use is consistent with zoning and criteria, we cannot prohibit, nor can the town require a specific type or kind of business or require that a particular business owner, whether it's a pet store. The, those are private entities that have their self-determination to determine where they wanna locate their business. Respiratory problems or environmental impacts in regards to gas stations are, gas stations are heavily federally and regulated by the states as well as at the federal level. Um, let me see. There was a churn analysis conducted, um, for the property to ensure that trucks can fit in and out of the site. Um, and then for design standards, design issues are considered under the site plan analysis, which is an administrative approval, that's not before the commission this evening. But we've definitely taken into consideration some of the requests. Orienting the building to the south and putting the canopy along Jordan while not under the approval considerations this evening is actually in conflict with our, um, design standards, which, um, encourage the screening of canopies. We have conditioned the use by special review to have that two-and-a-half to three-foot screening wall. There will also be eventually a future development to the west of this site that would additionally screen, um, the proposed, um, building. And I think that was, that's all the questions I had written down.
Other questions for Julia?
So, a couple folks brought up, um, turning at ninety degrees, and I'm, I'm trying to figure, I'm, which would again, I mean, if you, if you rotated the pumps ninety degrees so they were facing the north, is that a possibility, or does that go against the standard designs because you would see, um, you'd basically see the sides of the pump from, I guess, Jordan? And it wouldn't be in the internal part of the development area?
So we did ask the, in response to, um, the email inquiry I had received about rotating the building, we had suggested that the applicant look at putting the convenience store on the southern portion of the site, running east-west, and then the canopy north-south, um, as sort of a partial in-between what our, our design standards require and what the one individual request had been made for. The applicant looked at that and, um, through the churn analysis indicated that they would not be able to get their trucks in and out, um, if that rotation were made. So the current alignment is consistent with our development design standards, but we did explore alternative options in response to public comment.
Some, several questions and concerns were raised regarding crime being, uh, a result of having gas stations. Do we have any statistics regarding, uh, crime, uh, related to gas stations or gas station placements in neighborhoods?
I would have to ask our Parker Police Department for those statistics, but I would think that this would primarily serve the local residents of Parker.
Though, that, this is my think, you know, when we had a discussion, we just had a discussion about gas stations last-
Two weeks ago.
Meeting, last, couple weeks ago. And one of the things that they did is they, they looked at the fact that, you know, most of the folks who are gonna stop at this gas station are folks that are going to be, going, have been going down this road anyway. And then suddenly it's like, hey, look, now I can go get gas here rather than having to go out of my way somewhere else. So that it would primarily serve the people who are coming in and out of the school, the preschool, going up and down the road already. There wouldn't be, it would not be drawing people from other parts of the metropolitan district to come to this gas station. Would you say that's a fair statement?
I think that sounds like a reasonable statement and also considering the number of gas stations in other locations in the town for people to not want to go out of their way, it would make sense.
Right, okay.
I have, yes, I have a couple more questions. So, um, a light is going in for sure at Jordan and that intersection?
So, the engineering has requested that funding, I think once the site's developed, they'll determine when that need exists.
And can the town of Parker dictate traffic routes for, say, tanker trucks? So can you dictate that tankers only, um, egg, enter and exit off of Jordan?
So the town does have established truck routes-
Okay.
Um, where trucks doing through traffic are, um, supposed to be. They are not supposed to be driving through neighborhoods or off truck routes.
So is the, is the, um, southwest portion of the, of Cedar Gulch Road considered a truck route going into East Auburn Hills? Are those truck routes?
So truck routes are generally arterial roads, um, and then the other roads are access to provide the services the trucks are providing. So, like a moving truck would be permitted to go into the neighborhood-
Right.
If a tanker truck, um, is not intended to go through the neighborhood.
Right, so in this case, Maine and Jordan would be, or going all the way out, I guess, to Hess, would be considered the truck routes, tanker routes?
That would be the through routes the trucks should take.
Okay.
So to, to clarify that too, off of Main Street onto Auburn Hills Drive, I know there's gonna be an ingress there, off of Auburn Hills Drive into the site. Is that considered an arterial that trucks could use that to access the site?
So the two collector roads, the one that goes north- So the two collector roads, the one that goes north-south and east-west that provide access to the commercial site, that would be, those would be trucks providing services to those areas. So, yeah, certainly trucks would be allowed on those roads.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions?
Yeah, I kind of, I have some concern about the trucks as well, especially with the, with the schools, with the schools and children in the area. I was just curious if anyone's ever conditioned for restricted time for refilling of those tanks. Because we know that school gets in, and we know that, that traffic pattern, and when it gets out, we know that traffic pattern. Can we restrict the, you know, condition to restrict the refilling of those tanks to avoid those hours and having those, those big trucks in the area during that time?
So the town has not historically controlled the timing of deliveries for any business.
So question on use by special review. If, if a gas station goes in on this corner, does that, is there a future restriction on the other parcels to say, hey, you can't have a C store or a gas station on these other parcels? Or is that dictated by market and then the owners of those properties?
That would be dictated by the market and the property owners. There's not a quota or a limit or a cap on the number, but I, I wouldn't foresee a gas station immediately in that same minor development plot.
But there's no, no restriction to it?
There's no restriction. If they did apply, they'd have to go through the use by special review process.
Understood. And then are there, you know, somebody made a comment about, you know, neighboring uses that could, you know, I don't know if they're complimentary or not, but tattoo parlors or, you know, some of these other things, is, are those use by special review applications too? Is there, I guess, the question I'm trying to ask is, is there a similar process for other, using the right terminology here, but, you know, unsightly or un, you know, unappreciated, underappreciated uses?
The, for this PD, the uses by special review are limited to gas stations and auto-related services. Across the street, there is a multi-tenant development that has a range of uses, including, I think, a barber shop. There is a veterinary clinic going in. There's the nursery, school. There's a gym, I believe there's a gym in that multi-tenant development, and those are immediately adjacent to the gas station to the east on Main Street. So I would, I would think that future development may encourage similar types of development.
Thank you.
Other questions?
I believe so.
Then we will close the public hearing at 8:10 and have Commissioner discussion.
Could you put a backup on the screen, the conditions?
Going back into the?
No, no, I just want to see, I want to have it for my discussion.
Okay.
So if you could put those conditions back up.
I don't know if I have the conditions in the presentation, but I'm happy to read through them for you.
No, not the conditions for, for the development. What I meant is the criteria.
Oh, the criteria.
The criteria. I used the wrong word, I'm sorry.
The nine criteria.
Yeah.
There you go.
Thank you.
Those?
Yep. That's what I wanted to look at. I wanted to have that in front of me while I spoke.
Thank you.
So in reviewing these, and I, and I appreciate, and I am very glad that the, the neighbors have come to speak about this and you've come to represent your concerns. These are the criteria that we have to look at in order to determine if it meets the conditions of the use by special review. In my opinion, this meets the use by special review. It is consistent with all of the criteria. I think it will be adequately landscaped. I do not think that the, the health, safety, or welfare is an issue with it being a single additional gas station with the rules and regulations and with the addition of the electrical ports that we're going to have. I do not think it's going to result in undue congestion or traffic because the traffic that's currently going up and down those streets, that's the same traffic that's going to be stopping to use this gas station. I do not, I don't think it's going to use facilities. It's not going to have, it actually is going to increase and have a beneficial effect on a cap, community capital improvement because it's going to cause the installation of probably that traffic light. So it'll be easier to get in and out of those neighborhoods. It is not an over-intensive use of the land. It is consistent with the master plan. These are the types of, of services that people in the community need. And because it is going to be built with the design standards that we've put into place, I believe it will be in harmony and compatible with the character of the surrounding areas. And I will be voting in favor of this proposal.
So, you know, I appreciate all of the, the discussion, the questions, the, the passion of the neighborhoods, of the neighbors, pardon me. You know, something I wanted to clarify, too, you know, the Planning Commission is here to, we seek to confirm that the plans and that projects meet specific criteria in accordance with the town code. We are not here to dictate what a landowner can and can't do with their parcel. If it's within the current zoning and permitted within that current zoning, it's the Planning Commission's job to verify that and to confirm that. You know, I, I would tend to agree with Ruth Ann on, on a lot of these conclusions on the criteria for special review. You know, it is, it is not our job to determine if there's going to be undue traffic congestion or traffic hazards, which I think is, is a big issue with a site or project like this. We have a, a specific department within the town that helps and recommends that, and that is their job, that is their professional duty to, to help communicate that to us. You know, on, on, on some of the, the over-intensive use of the land, again, I, I believe this project is, is going to benefit a parcel that's probably been vacant since the eighties. You know, it's, it's positive development for what's happening in the town. Maybe I don't have a whole lot more to add beyond what Ruth Ann articulated, but I, I am support. Again, I believe they, they have met the nine special review criteria. It's in accordance with the zone, and they are conforming to the, the plan of the town.
So again, like, thank everybody for coming, and I, I do know it's, it's, it's a struggle. I'm a native. I've seen a lot of growth in this state. And growth in such a great area, whether you like it or not, unfortunately is inevitable. But I agree with both Ruth Ann and Eric that it does meet the nine criteria. I guess we all have different thoughts on what is undesirable and what some people see, deem as convenient, other people deem as undesirable businesses. Gas stations are highly regulated by the feds, the EPA, a multitude of federal acts. So I don't, I don't see gas stations, they're not rogue. They are, the, the more we go forward with this stuff, the better the technology, the more safety-conscious, everything improves with time. So I don't think it's an over-intensive use. I think the crime, we all use gas stations, and I'm not sure that a whole lot of us are criminal in here for doing that. And, you know, it's hard when you deem a business, again, undesirable because of perception. So I will, I am supportive of the project. I do think it meets the nine criteria for special review. We cannot, like Eric said, dictate what businesses go where. So, you know, we, when the, when the bank bought the other gas station, there was a lot of noise about, well, do we need another bank? Well, that's not for us to determine. We determine by the code, by the rules, what is allowed, and the gas station is allowed.
I'd like to also thank everyone coming out in the community. And I think more importantly, when, what Eric and Ruth Ann have both said is that we're not here to judge, we're here to be objective. And the objectivity comes from what we're taught. I've been doing this for eight-and-a-half years, and I happily serve my community because it is growing and because I have concerns. I don't see a gas station, as my fellow commissioner said, as being a criminal element. I think maybe a tattoo parlor may have a criminal element, but, you know, that's my opinion only. Seen some really shady people around them, but that's besides the point. Not that they're tatted, they're just shady. As Parker grows, and when I moved here 10 years ago, we had, I think, something like 48,000 residents. Now we have well over 65,000. That number is not going down, that number is going up. And every time you make it easier for someone to have access to what they need, we become a better community for it. So I'm going to be in favor of moving forward.
All right. I was waiting to go last because I just wanted to hear everybody's, everybody's thoughts and feelings on it. Also wanted to thank the neighbors and residents in the neighborhood who came in to, to, you know, share their thoughts and views on this. A lot, I feel for you. I understand your concerns. The crime thing, I was at a gas station once when it was held up, and you talk about the adrenaline and the shaking, and, you know, nobody wants that right next to their house. I get that. But it is, as you guys have said, it is not the duty or purview of this commission to dictate what a landowner could do, what types of businesses can be, you know, approved or disapproved on their, on their property, so much as, you know, you could be a tattoo parlor. But that's actually pretty, pretty popular these days, even though it might be unpopular, you know, in my generation. As far as the, the criteria, I want to thank you, Ruth Ann, for putting that up because that is a good reminder of what we're looking at, what, what this design has to meet. And I do believe that it does meet those requirements. In fact, I thought it was, it's, it's important to point out that the addition of that stoplight will actually hopefully result in less traffic congestion and more ease and, and safety on that particular corner. I am in favor of this.
Okay. I, I am, there's nobody left here to remind except you, sir, thank you for staying, that, that, as Eric stated, our process is one of kind of a quasi-judicial, that we look at these criteria. The, I know the gentleman that wrote the letter talked about council changing one of the decisions. Well, yes, they are a political body, and they make political decisions, and they're not necessarily, you know, bound by the same conditions that we are. And they can certainly change it because then it, it's a political matter, but we try to not, we don't get into political kinds of, of, kinds of issues here. And so I agree with everybody else that it, it certainly meets the criteria, and I'll be in support. Do we have a motion?
I move.
You don't have to read them all. You can just say outlined in staff's report.
Okay. I move Planning Commission, I'm not making that mistake twice. I move Planning Commission recommend Town Council approve the Auburn Hills Center L4- Circle K gas use by special review subject to the conditions outlined in staff's report.
I'll second.
It's been moved by Eliana, seconded by Ruth Ann, that Planning Commission recommend Town Council approve the Auburn Hills Center L Lot 4 Circle K gas use by special review subject to the conditions outlined in the staff's report, and I'll call the question. Kim?
Aye.
Eliana?
Aye.
Eric?
Aye.
Ruth Ann?
Aye.
Roxy?
Aye.
Chair's aye, passage unanimously. All right. Next item, Planning Commission items.
Oh, yeah, I forgot.
Oh, we do have something.
We do have something, yes. I know.
More than one.
Are we going after one or, number one or number two?
We.
There shouldn't be a number two.
Well, so, you know, Parker Municipal Code, so I'm, I'm in front of the, the commission here, is Parker Municipal Code requires that if a planning commissioner is absent from three consecutive regular planning commission meetings, a leave of absence is required to be given by a majority vote of the entire planning commission, or that commission member's position becomes vacant. Unfortunately, I've not been able to attend more than three consecutive meetings due to some, some serious health issues, surgery, but I'm, I'm back. There, there is a possibility that I will miss more than three, potentially later this summer, potentially in the fall, due to some, some treatments that I'll be undergoing. I still would like to be considered to remain a seated member of the, the Planning Commission, and that's why I'm, I'm requesting that the Planning Commission vote to approve a leave of absence for me from, this is retroactive, from January 13th, 2022 through June 9th, 2022.
I'm thinking.
So if you need another leave of absence, are you going to ask ahead of time next time?
Yes, now that I'm fully aware of the, the code and making sure that we comply with the code, it will be done in conjunction with, with Jeff and Bryce, making sure that that leave of absence is proactive versus reactive or retroactive.
Are there any restrictions against us being able to do this retroactively, Bryce?
No, ma'am, there are not.
All right. I move to approve a leave of absence for Commissioner Eric Franzin from January 13, 2022 through June 9, 2022.
I'll second. I'll second.
It's been moved by Ruth Ann.
Discussion.
Second by Roxy. I'll call the question. Kim?
Aye.
Eliana, still thinking?
Aye. Happy to have you back.
I abstain.
Yes.
Aye.
Aye.
Chair's aye, five, zero, unanimous. You're, you're stuck with us.
So I, I think I just, I think I just missed three or four meetings in a row and was unaware of it because I was on extensive.
Mine was more than four. Mine's been a few.
Sorry.
Yeah, but I'm the delinquent.
So, so we actually had a discussion at a training presentation, just, we'd been pretty lax about it because of COVID and a lot going on, but it is a code requirement. So we, we do need to start at least requesting it, just so that the whole commission's aware.
Any town items, Bryce?
Just one item, June 30th, so next Thursday, there's a new commissioner orientation. As I believe you're both aware, there are two new commissioners coming on board. Historically, we've just had the new commissioners there, but I wanted to make sure that you knew that you were invited as an optional, if you'd like to attend and just hear the attorneys speak again.
What, what time are you starting this? 5:30?
I, I was afraid you were going to ask me that. I, I believe, I believe it's at 5:30.
I thought the email said.
And, and we will feed you.
5:30 to 7:00.
Something like that.
Maybe not stick around for the whole.
Yes, you have the option of just stopping by to say hi.
Is Jim going to be a special guest?
I, I am unclear. Kristin is the new town attorney, will be leading it. I'm not sure if Jim's going to be attending. Actually, I take that back, I know he won't be, he's going to be out of town.
Okay.
Yes.
And I'd like to add that there will be food.
Oh, well, then.
Wait, margaritas?
Yeah. Please, please let Jeff know if you're going to attend. All right.
I would want to be there.
I'm going to keep us informed as high as I can.
Yes.
Okay, or do we have a motion?
I move to adjourn.
I second.
Well, there, there was a motion by Eric and seconded by several people, Ruth Ann, I think, that we adjourn the meeting. We'll call the question. Kim? Eliana?
Aye.
Eric?
Aye.
Ruth Ann?
Aye.
Roxy?
Aye.
And chair's aye. All right, folks.
Two, get it. Two.
That's all, folks.